If you please rise and join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have a pastor here this evening, so I'll be doing invocation. If you please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this evening. I just pray that you're with each one of us as leaders in this community and just open our hearts, open our minds, and open our spirits to the path that you want us to follow, Lord. Allow us to take into account all the different perspectives from the community and try to do what's best for this community and for you, Lord. We just pray that you guide us and we thank you and we praise you in all things. In Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, we will start with roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Egner?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Here.
Mr. Dole?
Here.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I move we excuse Doug Abrams.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
Mr. Dole?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Approve council meeting minutes for July 15th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Samuels?
Abstain.
Mr. Dole?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into the presentation, presentation section of the agenda, and we will be starting with the American Legion this evening.
We've got a little money to give away tonight. As we tell everybody at every meeting, if you're a charity inheriting and you need money, you might want to write the American Legion a letter. I will say that in it, with what we're giving out tonight, which is a total, because we've given out $750 tonight down at the Legion because the football couldn't make it up here, and we're also giving out, we also gave out 500 to hospitalized veterans who get through the Yanks program, which we mailed in. That being said, the total tonight will be $48,398, which for the year, from January the first till tonight, the American Legion has given away $132,486. That being said, if we could have the first person group up, whoever represents Shaker Farm, you'd go up and show up to Jean.
Ladies?
Yeah, you're not, you're not gonna get to sit there. Not with your fearless.
If you're getting money, you gotta get up to the podium.
So the Shaker Farms, they have a special project that they want to accomplish, and that is they want to redo the memorial out here up front about the Gold Star Mothers. So we got together and they figured out that they needed approximately, probably about $900, but I told the Legion, let's round it up to $1,000 because there's always something we forget when we're putting our thoughts together. So we're gonna give the Shaker Farms Garden Club a check for $1,000 tonight.
Now, each one of you got five minutes to say whatever you want.
She knows I can do it. I just want to thank the Legion so much for this donation. We are going to revamp the Blue Star marker that is out here. It's almost 20 years since we had a plan. You know, it was a beautiful plan at one time, but all that's left are the roses, the knockout roses, and we're going to put in a variety of different evergreens to give color and texture to that for all year round beauty. And then we also had the Gold Star marker, which is for families that lost their service person, and that's at the Harrison Community Center. And several of the shrubs died, and we're going to replace those shrubs and enhance the plantings there. So this will cover all of our expenses. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the Legion for this.
Great seeing y'all. Thank you.
Next up, whoever's representing the Harrison Senior Center.
You might remember that just about a month ago, we gave the Senior Center a check for $2,500 because they wanted to buy a new TV microphone and that for the seniors in the big room. Two years ago, we helped them with their Christmas project, and we figured they were doing another Christmas project this year. So we wanted to give Becky or crew plenty of time to decide what they'd like to purchase. So we're gonna give them a check for $2,000 tonight to go towards their Christmas program.
Absolutely.
I want to thank you. I'm one of the seniors at the senior citizens, and we do appreciate everything that you have done for us. And it's kind of nice that we're growing because of the process that you guys are helping us with, and we're very appreciative and thank you.
Sir Wattley, thank you for coming tonight.
And you need to stop by and see our new TV and our, like a big, a big sound system for our nifty fifties party that we're gonna be having on the fifteenth. So stop by.
Yep. If you're a senior and you'd like to find something to do during the day, stop down here and see Becky because she does an outstanding job putting the programs together for the seniors.
Hey, Becky.
And Bill helps her.
Hey, Becky.
Whether he wants to or not.
Number, number, number three was gonna be the Honor Flight, but the lady couldn't be here. Jean's meeting her tomorrow, and we're gonna be sponsoring three people on the Honor Flight, which is a total of $2,100.
Yep.
Number four, if the mayor, if you'd go up, go on up there.
As most people know that hear us every month, the Harrison Mayor's Fund is our monthly project. We're dedicated to the Mayor's Fund. We have been for over 35 years. We're just able to donate a little bit more money now, but we're gonna give the Mayor's Fund their monthly check of $2,500.
Number five, if people representing the Harrison Football Moms. One person's gonna get all this money?
That's all right. Angela's here. That's all, that's all that matters. We received a lovely letter from the Harrison Moms. We've been supporting the Harrison Moms program for the last couple of years. And if you don't know what they do, they provide the meals before every football game for the senior high, and they do an outstanding job. They have to raise all their own money, and they feed every athlete on the football team, and you do other things too, I know, but I know that's the main thing that you do. So we're able to give them a check to start their year off right of $5,000. Just tell them a little bit about the program.
Okay. One, I just want to say thank you. I was very happy when Jean called. So we feed 100-plus boys every Friday before the football games. That includes coat, and then coaches and trainers and everything. So this feeds them. And whatever we have left over, it does stuff like, we have a couple of boys this year that we are buying their knee braces that aren't covered by insurance. So just some, some extra stuff like that. So we just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the group, the group who's representing St. Vincent de Paul?
I think we have the Doles, right? Three of them, right? That's what names I got from Dan. Larry, Tina, and Jeff, right?
Right.
Oh, Rick.
Right.
Well, he sent me a voicemail, so it probably got jumbled up in there. But St. Vincent de Paul, they do a great job out here in our community. You do a free lunch every Saturday, is that right?
Yeah, the fourth Saturday of every sa- uh, month.
The fourth Saturday of every month, they do a free lunch, and you do many other things too. I know you have a food pantry and all kinds of things that go on down there. But we have a check for you tonight for $5,000.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this check. It'll help us do, feed those in need, which we built a brand-new pantry. So we're open twice a month for people to come in whenever they want. Plus, if anybody ever calls, we'll meet them down there, or if people call and can't make it, we bring food to them. So... Oh, it's 520 Park Avenue, but it's on the campus of St. John about this school. So if you, if you want to refer anybody there, just give us our call to our number, which is 513-300-7492, and there's always somebody to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for your service.
No problem.
Thank you.
Now, we're getting into the serious money. If we could have our police chief, please, please come forward. Chief sent me a text saying they needed some different items, and I said, I'll see what we can do, and went to the charity meeting, and this is the result.
So, um, our police chief is a very humble guy, and it's really hard to get him to request anything from us. I have to track him down. I did, and I said, we, we have some money we want to give you. We know you probably have something you would like to do. So I believe you're gonna buy a scan, a fingerprint scanner, some long, new, long uniform shirts, and I forgot this other one.
Fingerprinter.
I'm sorry.
The SRO radio.
Oh, yeah, the SRO. So we're giving the Harrison Police Department where they can purchase these extra things they'd like to have of $8,803.
I just want to quickly add that the American Legion is by far one of the strongest supporters of Harrison public safety, and without this money, these are items that I don't have in my budget and I couldn't get. So it's, in time of need, the American Legion is always there. There are several other in the community, but I can't say thanks enough. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And last but not least, this guy dressed up for this one, I guess. If we could have our fire chief, please come forward.
You brought some people with him.
And a group, whoever's with him.
They're coming. They're not happy, but they're coming.
Look happy. Now, they're happy. So again, we try to always touch base with the police department, the fire department, to see what they may need if we have extra money. And the fire department, they need a new boat, not a big boat, not a yacht, but a boat, a rescue boat with a new motor, and the cost was $9,495, and we're very grateful to be able to give you that check tonight, chief.
I'll just echo what the police chief said. The American Legion's been very generous, and we're very appreciative. It's hard to ask for funds from that group because you think there's other needier causes out there, but we're, we're very grateful. And I did promise Jean a riding a new boat when it gets here. So we will make sure we take video of that and we'll play it here at council.
Chief, I will advise you, she don't know how to swim, so if that boat overturns, call me.
I'll be wearing a life jacket, Cherry.
We also want to tell you that if you're, if you're a veteran in Harrison and you want to be a part, male, female, makes no difference. If you want to be a part of an organization that really supports the community, we'd appreciate if you'd come down and let us know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Absolutely incredible. The team down at the American Legion does a great job across the entire city, across the whole community. It's not just in the city. They do a fabulous job. You ever see them out and about, take time to talk to them and thank them for all their work. The next item on the agenda will be swearing in four new firefighters.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Like the mayor said, we're here tonight to ask the mayor to swear in four new firefighters who have met all the requirements outlined by civil service, become career firefighters. All members have been previously sworn in. Their start dates were this past Sunday, so we had to swear them in because it was before the council meeting, but they're all here tonight to be sworn in in front of all of you. First, we will have firefighter Jake Todd come to the...
Oh, you're making him cry.
Oh, we can hear you.
Lieutenant Alfield is going to pin firefighter Todd's new badge on him. And also, while he's doing that, every time we promote somebody to a full-time position or promote them to a new rank, we present them with a new helmet to start that part of their career out with. So we're presenting that to them as well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations.
Does he have his speech prepared?
Does he have his speech prepared?
Afterwards, it's five minutes.
You can stay right here. It's fine. Next up is May Cooper.
Please write your name. I state your name. solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Ohio. And that I will enforce the laws and ordinances of the city of Harrison and the state of Ohio and the United States of America. And that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which I'm about to
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, we have firefighter Ben Keiki. I'm gonna ask Ben's dad, Captain Keiki from Coal Rain, to come up as well.
Statement.
I, Ben Keiki, solemnly swear or affirm solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution that I will support the Constitution of the United States of the United States and the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio and that I will and that I will enforce the laws and ordinances enforce the laws and ordinances of the city of Harrison the city of Harrison and the state of Ohio state of Ohio and the United States of America and the United States of America and that I will and that I will in all respects in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of and ordinances of the city of Harrison the city of Harrison and that I will and that I will faithfully and completely discharge the duties of the office of the office upon which I'm about to upon which I'm about to
Captain Keiki's gonna pin his badge on him. Ben will be reporting to Captain Rimroth. He's gonna present him with his new helmet.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Harrison.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Lastly, firefighter Johnny Swicky.
Just real quick. While we are hiring this young man, I don't want to frame him forever as a firefighter, but this young man is part of the United States Army and might actually be shipped out on the 24th, 23rd, and be stationed overseas for the next year. So if you may, I would like to do a prayer. Please write your name. I, Captain Swicky, solemnly swear or affirm solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution that I will support the Constitution and the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio and that I will enforce the laws and ordinances enforce the laws and ordinances of the city of Harrison and the state of Harrison and the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio and the United States of America and the United States of America and that I will in all respects in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of and ordinances of the city of Harrison the city of Harrison and that I will and that I will faithfully and completely discharge the duties of the office upon which I'm about to
Mr. Swicky also reports to Captain Rimroth. I think he's gonna pin his badge and present his helmet to him.
Congratulations.
He's put on some weight and grown taller.
Let us name an ad break.
Mayor, members, council, thank you again. We appreciate your support. And that's all we have for this evening.
It's always an honor to be able to hire anybody for any department in the city. But to bring four young individuals into the city, we had the opportunity to work with them, get to know them, learn their personalities as part-time members of our department. And to be able to have the opportunity, so I do, I thank council for their support. Because to be able to bring these individuals in on a full-time basis is such a blessing. I think they're gonna be absolutely magnificent. I couldn't pass on any one of them. And I wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors in the City of Harrison Fire Department. So congratulations. Okay, the next items that we have in our presentations are a couple of proclamations that I have to read. The first one, I'm going to read a proclamation on a Purple Heart City. But what I'd like to do is have Ms. Jean Wilson tell us a little bit about a Purple Heart City.
Thank you, Mayor. I approached the mayor a few months ago, and I told him that I would like to see the City of Harrison become a Purple Heart City. And what does that represent? A Purple Heart City is a designation given to a city that has been recognized, that, excuse me, has recognized the commitment to honoring and remembering military personnel who have been wounded or killed in combat. The designation is given by the Military Order of the Purple Heart, a national organization for representation of the Purple Heart Medal. So it'll just, it just means that we recognize people that have served in the military who were either wounded or who were killed that were awarded the Purple Heart. And you have to go through the National Organization of the Purple Heart Military Order. And I just so happen to know the National Commander of the Purple Heart. And he met with me and told me everything we would have to do. And so once we have everything in place, there'll, every welcome sign on the City of Harrison, there will be another sign attached to that stating that the City of Harrison is a Purple Heart City. And we'll be having a ceremony in September dedicating the City of Harrison, or recognizing the City of Harrison as being a Purple Heart City. I'm still working out the details with him because he will be here to do the ceremony. And then the City of Harrison gets presented a plaque that will be placed, I'm sure, in a prominent place in the City of Harrison. But when I get further details about when it's going to be, we'll have that out there for you. It's a very beautiful and moving ceremony, so you may want to attend.
And if you haven't been in the Legion, we've got the best Purple Heart monument in the entire region. In front of our place.
The City of Harrison, its residents, the community surrounding us, has always been extremely supportive of our service members, whether they were stationed here or overseas. To be able to continue to express from the city side, I think this is the smallest thing that I can do from my perspective. But I encourage everyone to reach out. I know Jean will probably touch on it as be the one and everything else. We have a magnificent support system throughout, whether it's the American Legion, VFW, AMVETS, what have you. But then there's just the everyday residents. And every little thing that we can do to help and support them is an honor to me and hopefully to you. So with that, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Harrison and the state of Ohio has always supported its military veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been killed or wounded in action in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the Military Order of the Purple Heart was created exclusively for the combat wounded veteran by congressional action to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism among the citizenship and community, and support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. Whereas the greater Harrison area has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. And whereas the City of Harrison appreciates the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support that they have earned. Now therefore, I, Ryan Grubbs, Mayor of the City of Harrison, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the City of Harrison as a Purple Heart City.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then I do have one more proclamation to read. I, it's odd because I don't want to take away from the importance of that one. But our safety and awareness is also extremely important. And as we go into the fall season, it brings different weather-related concerns for our public safety personnel and myself. So I'm gonna read a proclamation establishing August as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. And what that does is it allows us the opportunity to take advantage of any grant funding or emergency funding that's available if there is a time of need. So whereas emergencies and disasters can occur anywhere and unexpectedly posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment. And whereas emergency management plays a critical role in developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs in the community to protect lives and property before, during, and after disasters. And whereas the Hamilton County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency is the county-wide emergency management agency for Hamilton County, established to serve as the central point for coordinating the county's emergency management efforts with all key partners. And whereas emergency management partners across all sectors play a critical role in building and sustaining a more disaster-resistant, resilient community. And whereas emergency managers throughout Hamilton County have served residents and visitors during all types of emergencies and disasters and dedicated countless hours to establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to effectively direct, coordinate, and support emergency and disaster response and recovery efforts through compassion and professionalism. And whereas National Emergency Management Month provides an opportunity to express appreciation to all emergency managers who serve Hamilton County and emphasize the importance of investing and bringing awareness to their role in helping our community. Now therefore, I, Ryan Grubbs, Mayor of the City of Harrison, Ohio, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Nothing like reading a book on camera in front of an audience.
Some must like giving a financial report.
Yes, it is. Okay, so now we'll move into the business session. And the first item that we have is a presentation of a conceptual plan for a proposed PUD business overlay on a B-zone property. Joette, take it away.
And introduce John Silverman, who's gonna take it away. You can come up while I'm getting you ready here.
So thank you for inviting me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. So before I begin, a couple of items that are irrelevant to our conversation about real estate development. First is, I've been developing shopping centers since 1982. I've been to countless city council meetings and planning commission meetings. I've never seen a firefighter induction like that before. It's awesome. So congratulations. It was great to be here to see that. As I said, I've never seen that before. So it's pretty incredible to see. The second item I want to mention is I'd like to apologize for my attire. I'm a volunteer at the Cincinnati Open Tennis Tournament, which began today. I encourage everyone to go. It's absolutely fantastic. The grounds are incredible, and the tennis is terrific too. And the volunteer marshals especially do a great job. For the next two weeks, this is what I'll be wearing. So I apologize for my attire. For your record, my name's John Silverman. I'm the Managing Principal of Midland Atlantic Development Company. Our address is 8044 Montgomery Road, Suite 370, here in Cincinnati, Ohio, 45236. It's great to be here this evening. I'll run through the slides and kind of give a little bit of color along the way as we talk about what we have referred to. talk about what we have referred to as Project D. I will start, I'm not sure what order the slides are in, because I've been at the tennis center all day. But I will start by telling you that we are not speculative developers. We have 42 shopping centers that we own in 17 states across the country, from South Dakota to North Carolina, Minnesota to Mississippi. But we are in all of these markets because we have very specific retailers, large retailers, that we work with on an assignment basis. So when we go to a community, we go to a landowner, and we say, "We'd like to buy your property. We'd like to develop in your community." We have a very specific use in mind. We don't put property under contract and then run around and try to find people to occupy that space. There's nothing wrong with that business model. That's just not our, that's just not the way that we do business. So we're here because a very specific user who we've worked with for 30 years, more than 30 years, asked us to come here. It's a great statement about the City of Harrison and how your community has grown and developed over the last decade or so that they've had us looking at your community. And now we're ready to hit the go button. So it's a pleasure to be here, and as I said, I think it's a great testament to your community. And we develop great shopping centers, as you'll see in the presentation. We own our shopping centers. We're not merchant builders. We don't build and sell to keep our projects. We maintain them. We operate them. We're an overhead machine. We have a lot of people that maintain our projects and operate our projects. And if we're fortunate enough to receive your approval, for better or worse, you'll be stuck with us for a long, long time. With that, let's see where the presentation takes us. We're privately owned company. I am the Managing Principal and the founder of the company, so you're stuck with me, too. We are an accredited management organization, which is a national designation that says that we're really good managers and operators of our shopping centers. We've won numerous awards throughout the years, including Best Development of the Decade for a large project that we did in Durham, North Carolina, which we're really excited about, have been really excited about. Some various projects that we have done. With me here tonight, by the way, is Bill Mies, who is our Director of Development. Bill and I have worked together for close to 20 years. Interestingly, Bill is on the Planning Commission of another community here in Cincinnati. And I like to give Bill grief, because when we first met, he was on the Planning Commission, and I was making a presentation about a project, and he voted against us. We hired him anyway.
That's like the third time I've heard that. He doesn't let you forget it.
I love telling that story. And Brian O'Toole, who's one of our development managers. So Bill and Brian are your primary team for the project, along with our leasing folks and our construction folks as well. Bill just finished a 100-acre project in Pinehurst, North Carolina. It includes Target, BJ's Wholesale Club, and a lot of other folks. It's a very nice project. We're really excited about it. Kenwood Place in Kenwood, Ohio, across from the mall, is the project Bill voted against. Voice America Center, many of you know here in West Chester, Ohio. Target Center with Fresh Market in there as well. Tryon Village is just a variety. We've built 55, 56 shopping centers, so this is just a smattering of a few projects. We're also doing the public's work in Northern Kentucky. We do a lot of work with Kroger, including Ohio and in Indiana. Those are the 17 states that we're in. Some pictures of various projects. This is a project that Bill just completed recently. I like the elevation. One of the things that you're going to notice in our pictures is we're very big on architecture. We're very big on hardscape. We don't build projects that have a 10-foot wide concrete sidewalk. We build projects that have a 20-foot wide sidewalk with pavers in them, flowers and trees and things, because that's how you keep people at your project. That's how you create space. That's how you create a place that people want to go to. And we're in the business of creating generational projects, and that's how you keep people coming back and coming to your projects for years to come. So all of our projects have a lot of open space, a lot of pedestrian space. We're big on water features, and you'll see that if we're fortunate here in Harrison as well. So as you look at these pictures, that's not Photoshop, that's an actual picture. So nice quality building materials, a lot of brick, a lot of stone. And you can see kind of the pavers in that picture as well as in the sidewalk, but it adds a significant feel to the project and warmth to the project that we really like. I like this picture just because it's the sidewalk, because it's such an important, it's such an important aspect of what we do that sometimes goes over, just doesn't go unnoticed, and people don't do much with it, but it's incredibly important aspect of the project. Again, quality building materials. That happens to be my favorite store. It's an outdoor store. It's a really cool store. We have, this is illustrative of landscaping and fencing that we do. None of these things are required, by the way, by cities. We do this. We like to add landscaping. We like the horse fence. It adds a lot of warmth to the projects, as I said, I keep using that word. Outdoor space. Our site plan for Harrison has the same kind of outdoor space to it. Lends itself to dining, some kind of restaurant activity. Water features, that's the corner at Voice of America. Hopefully, everyone is shocked at a lot. That's also Voice of America. This is a project in Kenwood, same kind of concept, architectural features, landscaping. This has a much more modern look. Once, we had a meeting with our architect about a week or so ago. We talked about kind of going out on a little bit of a limb and bringing some modern touch into kind of the classic look, which we think that you can do, effectuate both of those things. Kenwood has that on the left-hand side that you can't see past the mural, that's, which by the way, the mural was done by somebody from Harrison. I can't remember who it was, but the artist was from here. The left-hand side of the project is kind of a classic brick, traditional look, and the right-hand side of the project with Charles Schwab is really kind of modern and cool-looking. Harris Teeter, part of the Kroger organization. Again, quality materials. And this is our plan for Harrison, Ohio. It's a little bit hard to see, but if we are fortunate enough to go through your process and gain your approval, on the left-hand side, you have a major anchor tenant. That's 128,000 square foot store. It's modern, top-of-the-line design. Architecture in that store is awesome. It's a very cool store. They've continued, that company has continued to upgrade their design on the exterior and on the interior. They have several other locations in the market. This will be the nicest location that they have in the market. If you move to the right, you have other small anchor tenants in there, 20,000 square foot range. We're anticipating a soft goods retailer. We're anticipating a small grocery store in there. We're anticipating some restaurants on the out parcels in front. We anticipate two different banks that will be serving the project. We do anticipate, and we will be presenting through the process, a traffic study to support adding an additional traffic light on Harrison Avenue. So you've got the light existing at the right-hand side intersection, new light at the front, a pointer, but to the right of the big store on Harrison that aligns with one of the main entrances to Kroger. So you'd have a bank at both of those entrances. There's a coffee shop that's in the middle of that. And then on the right, far right-hand side, the far eastern side of the plan. So if we're all in the audience, we're kind of in the middle of the Kroger parking lot on that plan. And the far right-hand side would be a restaurant as well. It's just a kind of a cleaned-up version of the same plan. Very preliminary elevations. Really, these elevations were done just to get into the process and get the elevations designed, but we'll continue to upgrade these. The next planning commission meeting we have, which I think is in September, we'll be presenting an update of all these elevation drawings that are more accurate with what we will be building. These were really just placeholders to submit our application. That's the 128,000-foot store still. This is the inline space with the food store on the left, soft goods retailer in the middle. Small shops are on the lower part of the page there, with the restaurant on the far right-hand side. Panoramic view. Again, not to get over our skis, but if we're, if we are able to gain your support, we're going through the process right now, which we hope to complete in October. This is a really fast schedule, by the way, for us. We have another project that is about in the same stage in Charleston, South Carolina that opens a year later. So this is a really, this is a really fast schedule, but we expect to close on the land in December, start construction in January 2026, and open up in October of 2027. I actually think we have a date. It's October 10th of 2027, which happens to be my anniversary, so I remember the date. And that, that's our, that is our project. Again, we're really excited to be here. It's been a while since this particular user has done a project in Cincinnati area, done a project in Ohio in general. So it's really great that they're putting capital forth for expansion in our market. It's nice to work in your hometown, and we're really excited to be a part of the community. With this project, we will become part of your community. We don't just drop in. We will be here. We'll participate in your community. Some of you have heard me, the mayor's heard me talking about this before, and one of my community endeavors, besides working at the tennis center, is I'm the chairman of the Board of Cincinnati State. We own the aviation center out here. We're in the process of doubling the size of that project, by the way. We have 180 students. We're going to take it to 360 students. So we're doubling the size of our building and adding another hangar out there, so we're really excited about it. So I've been, I've been part of Harrison for the 10 years that I've been on the Cincinnati State Board. Now, it's an incredible pleasure to be part of the community as Midland Atlantic as well. So happy to answer any questions you have. And I'm sure the process is from here, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
You guys have any questions that you'd like to ask?
I do.
Yes, sir.
On the timeline that you have listed there, is that for the completion of the entire project, or is this, is this a phased approach?
We do not anticipate the project being phased. Size-wise, this is not, we phase a lot of projects. Bill's 100-acre project he just did in Southern Pines, Pinehurst, had five phases to it. Voice America, I think, had three phases. This size project, we'll build it all at once. A couple of the out parcels may lag a little bit behind, but I expect when the main anchor tenant opens up in October, everything will.
Any other questions?
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Appreciate you taking time to come out tonight. Okay, the next item in the business session is to vote on ordinance amending the amount appropriated to various funds of the City of Harrison.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a first and second. Any discussion?
Real quick, Mayor, I just want to run down these items. Some of the items listed on these appropriations, there's about a $16,000 appropriation for the replacement of the fire alarm at the police station. There's also $60,000 set aside for the Edgewood Road Sewer Project, which was part of the change order process, which came in at less than 1% of the project. So we did have a discussion with Andy. He felt pretty comfortable with those changes, was pretty happy it was that small. So typically on a project that size, they're typically a little bit larger, so. Also, $179,000 set aside for the Kilby Road Campbell Road Sewer Project Engineering. And correct me if I'm wrong, but all of these costs are to be reimbursed by the group going in out on Kilby Road, so that'll be reimbursed back to the city at some point in time through the process. We also have $80,000 being set aside for the recreation engineering for the splash pad in the restroom. We also have $65,000 set aside for the performance audit for the economic development, building, and zoning departments. Total cost is around $65,000, but we're only paying the state a $41 per, $41 per hour billing rate, which is fairly reasonable, with an estimated completion timeframe of about nine months. And the last item, it actually is a negative item. A few months back, we did appropriate monies to purchase property around Enterprise Drive. We have since changed direction on how that is going to be handled, so we're actually taking that appropriation back and removing it, so.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Samuel?
Yay.
Mr. Dole?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Agner?
Yeah. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move into reports. First, I would like to thank the gentlemen from Midland Atlantic for stopping out tonight and doing the conceptual presentation. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion already about it in our community, and as things continue to unfold, everybody will learn more. But they have been very good to work with, and I do, I appreciate that. Obviously, everyone can see the type of projects that they have done in the past, so it should bring some comfort rather than concern. But if anybody does have questions, unless you're going to ask me who's coming, I can't talk about that, but I can talk about just about anything else. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. We do continue our search for our Economic Development Director, so if you do know anybody that may have interest in working in a great community, I encourage you to have them reach out to either myself or Kim Downey. We'll entertain a conversation, and once we get to a point where we have a couple, we'll form a panel to go through an interview process. Just a couple items on the Mayor's Fund. I do thank the American Legion for the donation tonight. We continue to see a, well, the Harrison Mayor's Fund supports a lot of the families that are in need in our community. Every quarter, we give $20,000 to help families in our community that need help with whether it's rent or utility assistance. We actually made our contribution for the month of August, and it is gone on the fourth day. That's how many people are reaching out that need assistance right now. On top of it, with the economy, donations are down a little bit. So if your heart moves you to make a donation, we'd gladly accept any donations for the Mayor's Fund to help those that are in need. That's why the contributions from the American Legion, those other organizations in our community are so important. And I look for it to continue to grow as the community experiences a lot of economic change. We'll put it that way. We do have the car show this weekend, and I'm sure that Patty or Ms. Jean will talk about it here in a second, so I don't want to steal too much thunder, but I do encourage everyone to stop down and see some cool cars. It'll be down in the district this weekend. Comp Plan Steering Committee, we did have that meeting. I don't want to steal the thunder on that one, but this continues to move forward. But I do encourage any community members that would like to provide any information, feedback, or thoughts, perspective in regards to the comprehensive plan process, to reach out to either Patty or myself. We want to hear everything from everybody. Obviously, make it professional, but I can take bad just as much as I can good, so please feel free to reach out to me. Then the last item that I have, I did have it a, a emergency management board meeting this past Monday. That's why I read the proclamation, because it does help us if we need assistance or grant funding after a emergency event takes place. A lot of the board meetings, those are quarterly, a lot of those board meetings discuss the different events that have taken place throughout Hamilton County. Obviously, a lot of it deals with flooding, with the rains that we've been having. A lot of the infrastructure across the entire county has had problems handling the volume of rain that has fallen. Obviously, the City of Harrison, we have had some reports of street flooding and everything, but all our systems have been checked, and for the most part, from what we know at this point, they've been handling the rain the best they can, the best it can for two, three, four inches of rain falling in a 15-minute time period. But if you do notice anything in the community, whether it's standing water, fallen trees, anything along those lines, please feel free to reach out to the community center. We'll make sure that we try to address it as soon as possible. Other than that, that's the last item that I had. Mr. Dieters, do you have anything?
I have very quickly.
Very good. Mr. Wilson?
Sit back and relax. We have a street committee committee meeting today, and there's a number of items we've covered. One resident asked for a handicap parking spot in front of his house, and we talked about it, and we just don't see how you can do that for one house, because if you open that up, you'll have probably 500 people or more that want them. Our parking in our area is limited anyway, and we don't want to limit it more. In Dairy Avenue, curbs are complete, sidewalks are complete on the north side of the road running from State Street to Sycamore Street. The New Haven Road, we're going to, the police chief has asked us to add a signs on New Haven Road exits, about 10-ton limits, so they don't Haven Road exits, about 10-ton limits, so they don't have these big trucks coming down through Harrison, Ohio. Parking the alley in between East Street and Dare Avenue, the street permit gave residents permission five years ago that needs paved, but the city is not going to pave up an alley that, for a parking lot for residents. It's going to be used for everybody, and if you need to park, you're not going to be able to park on that alley. My understanding correct? Carolina Pines, Asheville Pine Court, and Charlotte Pine Court, they've asked us to accept those, both those streets. Parking on Evans Court and Circle Drive, there's no parking signs, no parking signs on Evans Court and in a cul-de-sac that circle needs to be added. Circle Drive, no parking. Resident requested no parking on Circle Drive to which, to switch to the other side of the road. Parking needs to stay where we think it currently is. Curb repair has begun on Circle Drive and Evans Court. The New Haven Road Bridge, we're contacting people to, about painting the fence. We got a letter from the Parks of Whitewater residents asking for a four-way stop to lower the speed limit at the entrance. The mayor's talking to county and the city about a possibility of a roundabout there at Dry Fork and New Haven, which we think would eliminate the speeding if it's built right. And that's what we're looking at there. Also saw and got a call about airport noise. One resident lives out there and said he's, here's too many planes taking off and landing. And I checked Facebook, and about eight different people said, you know what? I moved to an area that has an airport. I knew there were going to be planes flying, and they got used to it. Now they say it's kind of fun sitting out, watching them take off and land. So I don't know that there's anything we can do to limit training, because there are training pilots out there, and they need to be able to take off and land, and they need to be able to have night takeoffs and night landings. So there's not a whole lot we could do about that. And with that, Commander, that completes my report. I mean, Mayor.
I'm in the lead. I say, I don't know if I've been called commander before.
Nice new title.
Yeah.
New title.
New title.
I don't even want to leave that moment now. Mr. Agner?
I just have a brief report, Mayor. Thanks. We had a tech and media meeting this evening in accordance with House Bill 96 and Senate Bill 208. We're going to be exploring some, some options to increase our cybersecurity program. We also discussed MPATH. You know, everyone's pleased with the job that they're doing, so we're going to look at securing another year contract with them. And then once that's up, we'll reevaluate our next steps after that. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Abrams is not present, so Mr. Samuel, sir.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. We, Finance Committee did meet on July 22nd. As always, we did look at our revenues, expenses, and cash balance. You know, it's a consistent theme, you know, but looking at this from a mid-year perspective, because we're halfway through the year, it gives us a really good idea of where we're at and kind of where we're going to end up. And, you know, it was kind of as expected. The mid-year revenue and expenditure report, you know, was reviewed. Revenues and expenses seem to be in line with the overall budget through June. Some noteworthy items, you know, when we say the overall, the revenues and expenses are overall in line with the overall budget, you know, in total, they're doing well. We do see some variances in there. So, you know, with the revenue side, they did meet or exceed budget with the only exception being the real estate taxes. The payment was lower than what we expected, which was odd, because usually the payments from the county are spot-on. So Kim is doing a little bit of research on that and kind of looking to see what the second-half payment will look like. On the expense side, they also seem to be in line with budget. We do see some variances within some departments, but those are mostly offset by savings on another line item. For example, in the police department, the overtime budget is running over year-to-date. This overage is offset by savings on the salary side, because they've been down an officer for most of the year. So that with the officer being down a head count, other officers have stepped up, they're working the overtime. You know, this is somewhat of an expected variance, and we do appreciate the officers who stepped up and covered additional shifts. At this time, there are no other concerns we have with the budget except for the monitoring of the water fund. Other items we discussed, we did talk about the budget amendments, which I touched on before. Kim did also talk about the new timekeeping system. They are moving forward with the new time system that will provide a better continuity with the payroll system. The current system is too labor-intensive and requires too much manual entry, so they are switching. Really not a cost impact, because they're swapping out one system for another, and, you know, the cost is going to be about the same. The state audit is still ongoing. Also, Kim, we discussed separation benefit transfers. So Kim did recommend reducing the transfer amounts for the remainder of the year. Current benefit amounts are in line with expected slash eligible retirements for the upcoming year. And the last thing that we discussed was around fire department personnel. We did have a discussion surrounding the plan for the new staff. Kim will be providing more detailed numbers at the August committee meeting with the expected budget amendment to be brought forward in September. So, Mayor, that's all I have. I do want to congratulate the four new firefighters that were sworn in tonight. They looked excited and looking forward to it, so that's all I have.
Great young group. Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. Dole?
Thank you, Mayor. I have new committees to report on. I would like to say thank you to the police chief, the fire chief, and Andy Seider for taking time out of their busy day. They each took me through their departments, showed me a little bit of the inner workings, so I can kind of keep that stuff in my mind as far as going through some of these committee meetings. They refer to things that, you know, the average citizen and I might have not been exposed to previously. So, like I said, I appreciate that. It's definitely going to help the citizens and help my knowledge on the backside in helping make more educational decisions moving forward. So thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate all of the employees of the city. They were all very welcoming to me in their departments. They all explained everything, went in depth with their roles, their jobs. So it was great to get to meet those that I don't already know. Outside of that, just a brief update as far as the renaming of Willow Park. I know Jerry has kind of spoke on this. Jean has spoke on this as well. We previously, I think we had some lines crossed. We thought that the unveiling of this renaming was going to be sometime in August. It's actually going to be a little bit further out, so it'll be sometime this fall. We are still working on kind of the inside details as far as getting all that done and coordinating with the family. So outside of that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Ms. Patty?
Thank you, Mayor. We had an economic development meeting tonight. And leading into that, I do want to thank John and Midland for coming out. As the Chair of Economic Development, I appreciate you for giving the presentation to us tonight. I do want to let everyone know that the Dry Fork Road Warehouse, there has at least been signed, and currently, they will take occupancy October 2025. But there's a lot of high-tech construction that needs to be done, so we look for operations to start there in February of 2027. Planning Commission, the next meeting for Planning Commission is August the 12th, which is next Tuesday at 7:30 PM. Joette gave information about the facade grants that we have for Harrison. The additional facade grant that we have is to be released the middle of August. That is $130,000, and what she's going to do is open it up to all businesses downtown so everyone can take advantage of that if they would like. As the mayor said, we had a steering committee meeting last week. We are planning on the next steering committee meeting to be in September, and the gentleman from American Structure Point will also be here for our yard sale and our food truck rally, which is a huge day for us that day. So they're going to stay and spend the whole day with us. Rec Commission, we just wanted to remind everyone that we have our car show this Saturday, August 9th, in the district. It is from 12 to 4:00, and the Austin Tyler Lee Band will be playing from 1:00 to 3:00. And so far, the weather looks great, so that should make it a good turnout, as we had last year. Stormwater, we talked about that tonight also, and Andy wanted me to remind everyone that we are looking for a wastewater two or three operator. If you're interested in joining the city of Harrison as a wastewater two or three operator, you can reach out to Andy Seider, or the mayor, or myself, and we'll be happy to point you in the right direction. The last thing I have is I would like to request an executive session to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, federal rules, or state statutes by Division of Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. It's due to pending litigation and also an economic development project.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Dole?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Agner?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuel?
Yay.
Okay, after Mrs. Wilson's report, then we will adjourn to executive session.
I'll try to keep it short, Mayor, since I talked so much already tonight. But I was happy to see Midland here tonight, and we're excited, and we can't wait to see what's going to be coming to Harrison. I know that I'm going to love it, and I, I'm sure the residents of Harrison are going to really appreciate all your hard work. This being the first Tuesday of the month, it is Be the One Tuesday, so please reach out to someone you haven't talked to in a while, check in on, check in on them, make sure that they're doing well, both physically and mentally. It means a lot to people for someone to just pick up the phone and say, hey, I haven't seen you for a while. How you doing? Do you need anything? Do you need to pick up something that's stored for you, or do you just need to chat for a little bit? People who are isolated get lonely. They get depressed. So it's up to us to check in on them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. And I 100% agree with you. With that, we will retire to executive session.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.